All right, at 6:00 PM I'll call this regular meeting of the City Council to order, March the 27th, 2018. We'll begin the meeting this evening by please asking you to turn your cellphones off. We will start off with an invocation offered in the place of Councilman Vocal by Roman Garcia, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by his father, Mario. You may stand if you wish.
Please bow your heads if you wish.
God, thank you for bringing us here on such a beautiful and rainy day. You have called these leaders of the City Council together as servants to perform your will. Guide these leaders in their responsibilities to represent the people within our community. I pray that they also consider and support the desire of not only the adults, the voters of the community, but also the youth, the generation who the decisions of this council will affect most in the years to come. May the councilors find a way to work together in harmony, encourage one another's unique talents, approach to their decision-making through discernment, not through personal feelings towards one another, and respond effectively to the hopes of the citizens. I also pray you continue to bless this great city with additional development to further enhance the qualities and values of Kerrville, our home. We ask this through Jesus Christ, our Lord.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father and Son, for starting us out this evening. Item number one is announcements of community interest. Mr. Cunyess.
All right. Thank you very much, and welcome to everybody here tonight. We're especially happy to see some very special kids from Our Lady of the Hills, some great seasons, and we're going to recognize that in a few minutes. Just a couple of announcements. I know we have a lot to do tonight. First thing I have is Kerrville Little League, which kicked off its season last week with games at the new Kerrville Sports Complex. And Saturday was the annual Little League opening ceremony. Picture was taken by the incomparable Mike Keith. I love that photo, a bunch of smiling faces in there. And how many people in here have children whose pictures have been taken by Mike Keith? Just out of curiosity. He's been doing it for years and years and years. I've been told, it said on the website for Little League, that there are 600 kids playing baseball and softball this year. So those new fields should be quite busy heading into summer. Okay, take note, next week is the City of Kerrville's annual bulk waste collection. If you have a Monday collection day, you need to have your items out by 7:30 a.m. on Monday, April 2nd. If you have a Tuesday collection day, you need to have your items out by 7:30 on Monday, April 9th. And if you have a Wednesday or Thursday collection day, have your items out by 7:30 a.m. on Monday, April 16th. There's a guide on the city's website about the items that can and cannot be accepted. So if you have any questions about what to include, please check out our website. And finally, how many people are off on Friday? Got a three-day weekend, we're all happy about that. We just want to say Happy Easter, everybody. Have a great weekend and want everybody to be very careful and very safe. And I don't even know who's playing in the Final Four, I hate to admit it, but I'll tell you what you can this weekend. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Stuart. Any other announcements from council?
Mayor, I'd like to have one.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank Tina Woods from the Dietrich Center. She offered counsel, ride along with the Meals on Wheels group. Had a great time. They offer over 250 hot meals a day and five days a week. On my trip, I was able to meet the first Hispanic council member in Kerrville, and I thought that was an honor. And I just want to say we are very blessed to have these people to donate their time and resources to do this.
Yeah, thank you. We had a good time, three of us, I know that day we were there, maybe others, other days, but it was a great experience. And there are some people without transportation, no way to get food, and it's a great service and a well-oiled machine with the Meals on Wheels. Any others by council or anything from the audience, any announcements? Let's see, that red button doesn't go away. All right, then item number three, we have a number of presentations this evening. I will call first for the recognition and resolution of commendation presented to Ms. Sandra Yarborough for 34 years of service, and if she and her family and Mr. McDaniel, could join me in the front, please?
It's finally here.
Where's the barbecue?
So I get to start? Thank you, Mayor.
So I get to start, and the mayor has a resolution from the entire City Council. A little bit of information about Sandra, first of all. Of course, you see her family here behind, every great woman is a big family. And she also has several friends in the audience, I met some of them as we gathered here. If any of you have ever had a conversation with Sandra about finances or gotten some help from her, just raise your hand. Okay? So Sandra has been with the city 34 years now, and not many people can say that, but and this wasn't her first job, so she's been on with the city. She started out as a clerk, and she moved her way all the way up to Assistant Director and then Director of Finance. A little insight into the kind of person that Sandra is. So when Don Davis was interim city manager before I came onboard, she was thinking about retirement then. And Don said, "No, no, no, you need to stay on and work through the transition for the new city manager when we have that person come onboard." Well, she stayed, and she stayed a whole year after, and I'm so thankful, my background's in finance, but I always knew that Sandra had the financial items of the city in order and never had to worry about that at all. She has a great staff, she's recruited a lot of good people to help her, and it's just a well-run operation, and we thank you so much for that. The other thing I would say about Sandra is she's always a team player, always. So whenever we're working as executives or we're talking about a new project or initiative, she's like, "What can I do to help?" And, you know, a lot of folks that have been in their job that long don't like change sometimes, and Sandra was always willing to take on the things that I've asked her to do, so I thank her for that. She's also one of just a few employees that worked for Don Davis on three separate occasions, which is, you know, no small feat, right? And I understand that she's worked for about 10 different city managers over her career, so you've seen a lot, and we have all benefited from your fantastic service. So I've got just a real quick recognition that I want to read. So it says, "Certificate of recognition is hereby presented to Sandra G. Yarborough for 34 years of service to the citizens of the City of Kerrville and the City Finance Department. Congratulations on her service since 1983. Congratulations."
And before the mayor does the resolution, we also have the traditional crystal recognition and your service as well, Sandra, so we want you to have that. And then we'll end up on Thursday throwing a party for her as well because she deserves every bit of that. So thank you so much. Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much. You want to stay with us, and I'll read this and I'll correct you where you were wrong. Is that okay?
Sure.
So this is a revelation, well, it is that too. It's a resolution of commendation. Whereas Sandra Yarborough is a citizen of the great City of Kerrville, and whereas Sandra began her employment with the City of Kerrville on September the 12th, 1983, and started her career in, I thought it said France, finance, as an accounting clerk, I'll put it down here. Whereas Sandra began serving as the interim Director of Finance beginning in 2007, and was promoted to Assistant Director of Finance in January 2010, whereas Sandra was promoted to Director of Finance in May of 2013. Whereas Sandra has provided excellent leadership, financial advice, and professional fiscal services for the Finance Department in the City of Kerrville, and whereas Sandra has provided information, here's where you were wrong, and assistance to 15 different mayors and city councils, and has worked for nine different city managers since September 1983. And whereas, it is with sincere appreciation that the City of Kerrville recognized Sandra G. Yarborough for her 34 years of dedication and service to our community. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim March the 29th, 2018, as Sandra Yarborough Day in the City of Kerrville, and ask all citizens to honor and congratulate Sandra on her retirement. Let's go in.
Can I have, she has some comments real quick? Go ahead.
First of all, this is better than the Academy Awards.
You do a lot better, too.
No, truly, it's been an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to be an employee for the City of Kerrville. This is a great city, a great organization. It's only going to get better with our comprehensive plan, and I am looking forward to occasionally attending council meetings or watching it from home on TV.
And from the cruise ship.
This is my husband who encouraged me to apply for the job, and every day when I'd come home, he'd say, "How was your day?", and we would talk about it. Sometimes it was very funny, and sometimes it was like, "Oh, Lord, what am I going to do tomorrow?". So I really appreciate his support. My children are here, they grew up in the city, they kind of have an extended family. This is my daughter Rebecca Priest and my son Jim Behrens. So I appreciate it all, and Godspeed to all of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you so much. It's right there, it's your place on the dais.
Okay, we're going to move forward to item number 3B, which is a proclamation to declare March the 27th as Our Lady of the Hills State Champion Girls Soccer Team Day. And if those girls are here and the coaches and whoever else wants to come, would you join me in the front, please? What I'm going to do is get you to pass the microphone down and just introduce yourself all the way down to coach and your year in high school, okay?
My name's Gracie Morris, and I'm a freshman.
My name's Gabby Maholic, and I'm a freshman.
My name's Maddie Morris, and I'm a senior.
My name's Brianna Alacorta, and I'm a freshman.
My name is Shay Smith, and I'm a senior.
My name is Riley Coldwell, and I'm a junior.
My name is Nancy Garcia, and I'm a freshman.
My name's Rosio Garcia, and I'm a freshman.
My name is Michaela Grockie, and I'm a junior.
My name is Jorge Salinas, and I'm the coach for Our Lady of the Hills.
I'm Chris Ramirez, I'm the athletic director, and we have, I think, four girls that are not here tonight. They're actually playing softball games as we speak, so they're multi-sport athletes at our school, are very common.
And I'm Trey Schwartz, I'm in my seventh year as principal at Our Lady of the Hills.
And y'all are getting to be regulars here, and that's great, we're glad that you did. So I will need my glasses to read this, because there's a lot that you guys have done, okay? This is where, as Our Lady of the Hills is a Catholic high school located in Kerrville, Texas, OLH opened in 2002 with 19 students, has grown in enrollment to 103 as of this year. It is a Christ-centered, coeducational, college preparatory high school that offers a number of varsity sports, including girls' soccer. The girls' soccer program competes in Division III of the Texas Association of Private and Prokeial Schools as Our Lady of the Hills Lady Hawks, and whereas the Lady Hawks 2018 soccer team won their district with an unbeaten 12-0 record and finished the season 18-1 and 2 overall after shutting out, I can tell the principal wrote this, or maybe it was the coach, shutting out McKinney Christian Academy 5-0 in the TAPS Division III State Championship game Friday, February the 23rd at Waco ISD Stadium. OLH's victory produced the school's first-ever state championship in a girls' team sport. And whereas Our Lady of the Hills TAPS Division III State Champions include, and you already gave your names, I won't read those again, but they're all listed, the team also drew support from OLH classmates, teachers, parents, friends, fans, and the great community of Kerrville. So now therefore, I, Bonnie White, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, do hereby proclaim March the 27th, 2018, as Our Lady of the Hills State Champion Girls Soccer Team Day. Congratulations, congratulations, all of you girls. Not to be outdone, item number 3C, proclamation declaring March 28th as Our Lady of the Hills State Championship Girls 50-Meter Freestyle Swim, Ella Junker. I recognize you from the newspaper. Very good. Let me see. Well, you don't feel like a swimmer. So, whereas Our Lady of the Hills is a Catholic high school, and I won't repeat all of it, we know our history and we know where you came from, and congratulations for being there. Whereas the Lady Hawks 2018 Swim Team Member Ella Junker is a junior at Our Lady of the Hills Catholic High School, and whereas Lady Hawks 2018 Swim Team Member Ella Junker has been named as an academic all-state swimmer, and whereas Lady Hawks 2018 Swim Team Member Ella Junker won the 50-meter freestyle swimming state championship, now therefore, I, Bonnie White, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim March the 28th, you'll have a busy week here, Our Lady of the Hills State Champion Girls 50-Meter Freestyle Swim, Ella Junker Day. Big enough pool. All right, item number 3D is a certificate of recognition to Our Lady of the Hills Hawks 2017-18 Boys Basketball Team for their 28-7 overall record. Did they come tonight? You didn't know? Okay, we will defer this, we had it put on the agenda, we'll defer this until the next time. Thank all of you for coming, and thank all of you family members and coaches and principals and teachers and all of you young people for really putting an effort out. We're proud of you. Okay, George, it went away. Okay. So we did have a speaker? I'm sorry. Then we'll go back to item number two, Visitors and Citizens Forum. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the City Council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. City Council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on a future agenda. The number of speakers are limited to the first 10, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. Richard Ferris. Mr. Ferris, does this have to do with an agenda item tonight, or is it just a general statement?
I was not aware of the agenda item, Your Honor.
I mean, are you speaking to a particular item that we have on the agenda, or just a general comment?
General statement.
Okay, all right.
Two items, actually.
Okay.
Richard Ferris, 416 Main Street, Kerrville. I don't know how many of you traverse the streets of Kerrville after 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night. I do, about six days a week, and I would like to speak to something about the traffic lights. I know it's a joint thing between the city and the highway department, but it seems ridiculous that you can't go through town without being stopped at a light and there's not any car anywhere in sight except yourself. I don't see any reason why these lights could not be put on flash.
After hours?
That's it.
Okay.
On that one.
Okay.
The second part...
I'm sorry, would you like to answer?
Is it the one at Schreider &amp; Hayes that you're, that in particular that you're concerned about?
The one at Schreider &amp; Hayes? No, I'm talking about Main Street.
27.
27 and 16. You come around this corner on 16 going north, turn right on 27, go east, and you'll get stopped at Earl Garrett every time.
Okay.
Guaranteed. Secondly, my address, 400 block of Main Street, Junction Highway, Broadway, Highway 27, whatever you want to call it. But in that block, I am on both sides of the road, pieces of property that seem to be the collection point for all the water coming down that street. If you look at the front of my building, when it rains, the water splashes six feet up high on the side of the building. And on the other side, the perk people, you have to use the back door, they can't even go through the front door, it floods so badly, again, from the spray. And I would like to request some consideration for storm drains.
Okay, we just, we did have a workshop recently on that, and it will be on the radar going forward, a master plan to look at that. So I, we'll put that in the mix for that address.
Those are my subjects, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I don't see any other speakers, if there's no one else? Item number 4A is, or 4 is the consent agenda, we have 4A and 4B listed on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? To approve?
I'm trying to make one. Yes, move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Cast your votes, please. And the motion carries 5 to 0. Item number 5A is ordinance and second final reading. This is ordinance number 2018-07, amending Chapter 74 Parks and Recreation, Article 1, Rules and Regulations for City Park and Recreation Areas of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by amending various sections to address the operation and use of the Kerrville Sports Complex, containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and sever providing a penalty and providing other matters relating to the subject. Ms. Bowles.
Good evening, Mayor and council, this is the second and final reading of this ordinance. There have been no changes since the first reading, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, any questions by council?
Mayor, I have a question. As far as the, let me find it, artificial noise makers, would that include music in PA systems, like announcing games?
No, that would include like whistles, cowbells, air horns.
Okay, so a team brings a jukebox or something to the game, they can listen to that while they're practicing?
As long as it's not being obtrusive.
Okay, yeah, because I did some umpiring this weekend, and it happened, and I asked the kids, I said, "Do y'all like that? I don't like that song, but I like the ability to play music." I said, "Okay."
Yeah, as long as they keep it to a minimum, that's fine.
Okay, good.
Just because we're on clarification of the noise makers, I was umpiring as well, and a team is buying those hot tamale candies and shaking them. We're not going to stop them from doing that, are we?
Oh, my.
That would maybe technically count? Was that bothering anybody?
Yeah, but I'm more, I'm more just hoping that we're not going to do that. But yeah, they were actually, that's what they bought it for.
Yeah, it's mainly for the soccer side, because it's against the TAPS rules.
Oh, okay.
Doing for like OLH games, but, you know.
Okay, good questions. Any others? I don't see any speaker request forms, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To approve on second and final reading. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Motion to approve carries 5 to 0. Item number 6A is Resolution Number 09-2018, granting a conditional use permit for Lot 3, Block 1, the Sutton Edition, a subdivision within the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, and otherwise known as Third Memorial Boulevard on State Highway 27. Subtract is located within the 29E zoning district by permitting said property to be used for a manufactured home or manufactured housing, and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is in the zoning E29 district, which is a fairly inclusive district. Does have several conditional use permits, one of those being for a mobile home. They are looking to split this property, and two, there is an existing home, it'll be on the, I guess, the back lot at this point, once they replat the property and place a mobile home on the front of the property. List of uses there.
I'm not sure if it makes a difference, but just to clarify, it's actually a manufactured home that they're presenting, right? Not a mobile home?
Excuse me, yes, manufactured home. Here's photographs of the manufactured home.
That's the actual home that they're, they would be putting there?
It's my understanding, is that correct?
Okay.
Yes. And here's the site plan of the property, as you can see on the kind of northeast side of the property is the existing home, and right there in the middle of the property is the placement for the manufactured home. Through the analysis, we looked at the compatibility of the manufactured home to the adjacent area, vehicular and pedestrian safety, drainage impacts, nuisances, and terrain. Sent out 15 letters, and no one has testified in opposition in writing or planning commission.
I thought we had one letter, we didn't?
We had one.
After the hearing.
Planning Commission did recommend denial of the case, and with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Did staff recommend approval?
I'm sorry?
Did staff recommend approval at PMZ?
No.
No.
No, they actually did.
I believe they did.
In the minutes from the meeting, they did.
They recommended approval?
The staff did. Staff recommended the PMZ.
Oh, I see.
That's what it was.
But the PMZ board, I'm sorry.
PMZ's recommended, correct.
PMZ recommended not, or denied.
Any questions? I have, I have a question about the location, would you repeat that again? I had a little trouble hearing you where it's to be placed.
As you can see on the screen there, sorry, the screen's a little difficult to read. Find my pointer.
It's a little down here, but isn't that?
Right. There are several easements on the property, running across the property, they've located with easements.
Okay, and it is surrounded by what kind of businesses? A car wash, I believe?
Yes, there's a car wash, the VA Hospital's back to the east, and the car wash is there to the northwest on Junction Highway, or Highway 27, Memorial Boulevard.
Any questions or comments by, I don't see, if not, this requires a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at 6:30 p.m. And I do have a couple of people who would like to speak. Juan Carlos Ramirez, if you would approach, give your name and address, please.
I own the property at 105 Car Tuck, which is within 200 feet of that proposed change. We've owned that property for over 50 years, 53 years. We've owned that property for over 50 years, 53 years. When you come into Kerrville, and I've seen all the changes happen. I graduated from Kerrville, Tybee Hyde 73, so did my brothers and sisters. When you see all the changes that have taken place in that corridor entering Kerrville, it's been a really positive change that's come about. You have the Stock Barns there, you have a lot of events that are being held there. There are rodeo, roping arenas right adjacent to that. You have the Arts and Crafts Fair that's being held in that same area. You have the Flat Rock Park that's being used for a variety of different events, Easter egg hunts, chili cook-offs. You have the State Park that's across the river there, which you have visitors from all over the state of Texas and abroad. You have the relatively new high school up on Memorial Boulevard. And I just, you know, I'm a broker, and I build multimillion-dollar homes in San Antonio. And I see a lot of developments that transition either upward or downward. And I'm... my opinion is that you don't want to have a manufactured house, housing area within the city, particularly that corridor where you've seen so much positive change. And, you know, I'm sure that it's a nice home, I've seen plenty of them, but you would want to have stick and mortar building placed in that corridor where it's so visible. I think there's a lot of traffic coming into Kerrville when you have all those events, and I think it would be just a negative. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you just a question?
Sure.
Roughly, because I'm not familiar with street names, where's your property at in relation to...
Riverside Drive.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, so if you come down Memorial, come down Riverside Drive, you hit Carmichael. The next street is Car Tuck. I'm a stone throw away from that property. I'm a stone throw away from Flat Rock Park. I'm just a walking distance up to the Stock Barns. We get a lot of traffic up there. We come down quite frequently when we have the Arts and Crafts and chili cook-offs and all that, because we can walk to all those venues. But I've seen such a positive change in that corridor, because we've owned that property for about 53 years. And anytime you start making changes like that within the city limits of almost any city, I would think it's just not positive. You need to have brick and mortar building put up in that location. That's my comments. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Second speaker is Charles Wickerware.
My name's Charles Wickerware. I've been a chiropractor in this community for 28 years. I've been proud to be a Kerrvillian. And that's the reason why we moved here, was to be in a small community and to be able to raise a family here. We bought this property primarily as an avenue for an investment. It is commercial property, we intend to sell it as a commercial property for whoever comes along and wants to buy that. That is one reason why we don't want to build a permanent structure there. And the second reason we bought that thing was to keep my family here in Kerrville. I've got a daughter, Mariah, and her husband, Mike, and my grandson, of course. And she's planning on expanding the family. And the current home that they live in is too small. And as you all know, affordable housing in this community is scarce. When we moved here 28 years ago, my wife lived... My wife and I lived in the attic above our clinic for a year and a half. We were poor, spending all our money on our education. And so we had to have a place to stay, and we lived in the attic of that 612 Sidney Baker House. It's in between McDonald's and the Chicken Express. And we found a house finally that we could rent. It was a two-bedroom, one-bath house. When our son came along, we needed to expand. And we were fortunate enough that we had accumulated some money that we could buy a house. And now my young family is trying to get started here in Kerrville. We need a place for them. Apartment's not an option. I want my grandson to be able to have a yard to run in and enjoy being a kid and not be stuck in a real confined situation, like an apartment complex. The reason we want to put a manufactured home is that whenever that piece of property sells as a commercial piece of property, we can just move it. And that way, we won't be wasting a lot of money or having to have the rent so high because we had to build a mortar and brick structure on that property. And we are proud to be here in Kerrville. We understand that's the western gateway into Kerrville, and we have no intention of making it a blight. We're going to repaint that manufactured home. It's situated a little bit towards the back end of the property. There's a live fence all along that frontage on Memorial Boulevard. There's trees that obstruct that whole property view, so it's not going to be an eyesore. We can also put on the western... actually, on the eastern side, another live fence to separate that property from that empty lot that's next to us. There's another piece of commercial property between us and the Minmart store right there at the Loop and Memorial Boulevard. So we have no intention, again, of making it an eyesore or a situation that's going to be an embarrassment to the community. And I've got a son that's going to be living in that house. And my son and my son-in-law have grand plans to do some landscaping and actually make it a very comfortable place for them to live as their family is growing. But again, we're going to sell that thing eventually as a piece of commercial real estate. So it's not going to be a place to accumulate a lot of mobile homes or manufactured homes. It's just that one and that house that's on there that we're going to be utilizing in this near term as a place for the families to live.
I have a question for you. Were you aware that also on the agenda, should this waiver be granted, that there... I mean, should this conditional use, that there is a sidewalk issue too that is...
Yeah, that's one thing I'm not... I don't quite understand. There's not a whole lot of walkway there. And right adjacent to that Memorial Boulevard, that's not even our piece of property. We have the drive and a short piece...
Excuse me, I don't want to get into the discussion of that, because that's another agenda item.
Yeah, I'm aware that's on there.
I just wondered if you were aware of that.
Yeah, I'm aware that's on there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And that's why we were requesting a waiver.
We're just following protocol, so. Were there any questions or comments for the property owner? If not, Bruce Strakey, would you like to speak?
I did turn in the document here, because I was late.
I got it on here, sure, yeah.
I... in looking at the plat, there's about 160 feet of sidewalk that... where the property is adjacent before it angles off. I'm...
You mean in the requirement?
Yes.
Yes.
There's about 158 feet and change that shows on the plat that's adjacent to Memorial that would be sidewalk, and then it does go away from the highway, and another property owner is involved in that. Drew, has this been platted already?
Yes.
It has... the plat has been approved, so this is two lots?
Yeah, it has not been recorded.
Can you define where we are in that process for me, before I...
The property itself is planted as a single lot. There's a replating process, but it has not been finally approved yet pending the result of the sidewalk.
Okay, and that's... and so I may be out of order, because I'm really concerned about the plat and the use of replating and subdividing property without providing public streets and correct access using these private easements. That's come up very recently on several properties, not just this one. And I'm very concerned about the use of that in our subdivision ordinance. And so if I'm out of order and I should come back at the plat, which I think is required to put the house on, right? So whether they get a CUP tonight or not, the plat is... needs to be done. And so perhaps I should come back, and I'll defer to you all.
Straighten us out on that a little bit, I appreciate it, Bruce.
You bet.
Yes, the plat has been in the planning commission, is pending the sidewalk waiver for the final approval. So the plat has been approved, has not yet been recorded.
Okay, so can I make some comments?
Yeah.
At, because there's an issue of public and private streets and use of private easements in the city that I think is very concerning to us. And especially on a commercial property like this, where we're subdividing a property and we're not creating a true subdivision with public access and such for... and granted, a temporary use perhaps, but we don't know... And as we all know, we have to look out longer, and plans change, and owners change, and such. And so I'm very concerned about the use of... and I'm looking at the site, I'm looking at the packet, the site plan illustration. And I apologize, I didn't have a plat, but there's a shared access easement on one of the proposed lots that then creates a... another easement onto this lot that is looking at this in the scale about 200 feet off the street. And I'm very concerned about this. The precedents were setting. We recently did this off a meeker, where we created eight lots with no public access. It's all private. We turned down some stuff in Oak Hill, which I think was the right choice. And I'm just being frank with you, so you all know my opinion. I think the use of not actually creating a true street with a true right-of-way is a mistake, whether it's a public street or a private street. The Meridian can have private streets, the Heights can have private streets, that's fine. What I'm concerned about is when we're creating subdivisions without a true right-of-way for streets and utilities. And we don't know how this is going to go in the future. And that's my concern.
So we're just considering the conditional use?
I know.
This evening, but that probably would be a question for P&amp;Z, unless you think it's something that we need to address here. But I... well, taken, I mean...
Thank you very much.
All right, are there any questions for the applicant by council or staff? I just have one question for staff. So P&amp;Z denied, staff recommended approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can you clarify the reasoning there for us?
From the staff recommendation, this does meet all the requirements of a conditional use permit. It is Zoned E29. Conditional use for a manufactured home is listed in the code. As far as the access to the property that Mr. Strakey was referring to, they are splitting that access off of one partial frontage. The both properties will have frontage, but with it being Tech Dot, they only have one curb cut, so there is a private access traversing both properties for that.
And I'm not as well...
And that's the Tech Dot rule?
Tech Dot's going to limit the access, the number of curb cuts on the highway. So rather than going back to Tech Dot and asking for two separate drives that would not meet their requirements, they're sharing that one drive.
They enter at the main house?
But when the plat is complete and recorded, the owner of the property will be the same for both properties, or different owners?
That's correct. It'll be the same for both properties when it's recorded.
And under a conditional use of... as long as... if it should be approved, as long as it abides the way it is, it's fine. But then if it's sold, then that conditional use leaves, correct? And would have to be reconsidered again? No?
Runs with the land.
Runs with the land.
Oh, okay.
Right, so they could get the zoning today, sell the property tomorrow?
Is that a condition we could put on it, though?
That it expires?
Yeah. Is that even a legal condition?
I don't know.
So otherwise, it would be if they added something to it, then the conditional use would leave?
Right, if they amended or removed the use. If they amended it, they would have to go back to the process. If they removed the manufactured home, then the conditional use would cease. But with the sale of the property, it is not.
So I think what Mr. Strakey was saying is if it was sold and they left it with the home... both homes there, then if one lot was used for commercial or either, but different businesses that still... that have only one drive in, and that was your concern?
Correct, one drive, that's shared access traversing both properties.
Okay.
Can I address that?
Well, if it's to this particular property...
If it is to that particular question, the property. The applicant could go to Tech Dot and ask for a curb cut that's larger that meets our right-of-way standard, which is what I was really trying to address. When we subdivide property, we have a subdivision ordinance that asks for a particular right-of-way sizes. And they could go and do a shared curb cut on these two properties that meets that right-of-way and provides access that no matter how the property gets sold in the future, I'm not trying to make... I'm specifically staying away from the manufactured home, that then no matter who owns the property, however that something changes in the future, then we have a legal access from Tech Dot that suits two properties. Instead of we have, right now, a very small driveway access, concrete that was put in many years ago. Nothing... you know, nothing wrong with that, but we don't know what's going to happen in the next 10 years on these two lots. And that's what I'm concerned about. And so a shared access, right, with a size of a curb cut that meets Tech Dot standards for two commercial properties, that then... Because Tech Dot does want separation between two separate ones, but we don't need two separate ones. We could have one, shared one, that then would suit the properties for the next 20 years. And that's my concern. I'm sorry, I wasn't clear the first time.
All right.
Can I ask one real quick question? I don't know if it's quick or not. It... the... I mean, he raised the plating issue. If it wasn't actually replatted, would the second home on that be allowed?
No, it would not.
Okay, so do we have the cart before the horse, or not, as far as that goes?
They're running both concurrently.
Okay. And then the other is not really a question for you, it's just my thing. Me personally, I'd really like to be able to approve this. But the things that I'm getting hung up on, and maybe somebody can help me, is what conditions would we put on it that make it compatible if it's not deemed compatible now? Are there any? And then the other was at P&amp;Z, so we've got staff approving it, or recommending approval, sorry. And we had P&amp;Z denying it on a 3-2 vote. So I think it was Mr. Zubor and Mr. Segerman voted for approval. Did they have conditions? I don't recall. Do you know?
Not that I recall.
Okay.
No.
I mean, can you... as is, staff was recommending approval, or was there a condition that they were actually...
We did not look at any conditions.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Okay, any further questions? All right, then I will close the public hearing at 6:48. And if there are no more questions or comments by council, then I would entertain a motion on item number 6A. It would have to be either to approve the CUP or deny. No one wants to make a motion?
Nobody. Nobody wants to say no, but I think I have to. And I'm sorry, but I think we have to guard the integrity of that corridor, that entrance to Kerrville. And there are just too many unknowns as the future comes along. Your plans may work out just the way you think they will, but they may not either. And then the citizens at large would be the losers. So I'll... my motion will be to deny the conditional use permit.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Well...
That motion will fail for lack of a second. I would need a motion, though, to approve from someone, if that's the key.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 09-2018.
07? Let's see, 09...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're right, 09-2018. All right, is there a second on that?
Is it with conditions at all? The motion with conditions at all?
With the conditions of building the fence that you described in the landscaping.
Okay.
Forgive me, I actually forgot what he said about the fence. What fence did he... what did he use?
On the eastern side, because it is open to the empty lot that's next to us between the Minmart. We can put a live fence there instead of a wooden fence. I think trees or red pimperkins, something that'll keep that enclosed, but not be an eyesore like a fence.
Does that answer your question?
Those would be evergreens, I guess? Something that's green year-round?
Anything, yeah, anything is going to be like a big live hedge rather than a wooden fence. That's what our plans were.
Okay.
And just enclose it, so it's private.
If that's the motion, it'll be written into the motion as part of the requirements, into the requirements. Okay, does that clarify it, Mr. Strakey?
Yeah, so... but it's just on the one side, it's not actually on 27.
Well, on 27, there's already one there. Well, on 27, there's already one there. It's a bunch of trees right there. If you drive by, you already will see it's the property when it's all.
Okay.
Okay. Does that mean you're going to second, Mr. Brady? Or do you have something to add?
No, I don't have something to add. Yeah, I guess with that condition, I would second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion, and we have a second.
Can you clarify the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we need to restate the motion, because I believe you used the term fence, and they're not talking about a fence.
You said a live fence, or I don't know what you would call it, shrubbery?
Yeah, shrubbery or hedge.
Screening.
Okay, but we got, for me, I would like to know, like, a height. So when I say shrub, I'm thinking of a bush.
No, no, I'm talking about something that would be.
Let's put a height number on it.
Eight foot.
Could you get some, you can get some good hedge rows that are-
And that's about as tall as a wood privacy fence?
What's the term for that?
Screening.
Screening.
Live plant screening?
Landscape screening or landscaping.
Okay, that's a good definition. Would you restate your motion then for Ms. Craig?
I move to approve resolution numbers 092018 with the conditions of an eight-foot live screening.
Mayor, at maturity of the shrub, right? Because they're not going to put eight-foot shrubs in day one.
Is that suitable to you?
Can you put eight-foot shrubs in at day one?
I don't know if we could find them.
Well, they have, well, they have.
Plant them that.
Okay.
They'll have to grow, but we can get some that are already on the way.
Mature.
Okay, that's okay.
All right, is that satisfactory, Ms. Brady? Is that satisfactory, Ms. Craig?
I have mature landscape screening and take out eight foot.
No.
No. Screening that would be eight foot at maturity.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Is it, okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Are we clear on that, Ms. Craig?
Okay, so I, yeah, somebody else pushed it, or did I just do it? I guess I did.
Okay, we'll be ready for the vote. Cast your votes, please. Motion carries three to two. Okay? 8A, resolution.
Seven A?
Seven A, sorry. Ordinance number 2018-11, adopting the design manual for the installation of network nodes and node support poles pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 284, containing a cumulative clause containing a savings and severability clause, providing for penalties not to exceed $2,000, ordering publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a design manual for the installation of network nodes or small cell towers pursuant to Chapter 284 of the Local Government Code. The state legislature developed Chapter 284 specifically for these small cellphone towers to be placed in the public right-of-way. They've narrowed the scope fairly tightly for what the industry can do and what the city can regulate or control of these towers. This design manual is drafted from a template from the Texas Municipal League, which is consistent with Chapter 284. Goes through, as you can see, several different points with regard to preferred locations, defining what type of equipment is allowed under these guidelines, the guidelines on the placement within the right-of-way, general aesthetic requirements, electrical supply requirements, insurance indemnity and bonding, security deposits with the city, any requirements for the removal, replacement, or maintenance of the equipment, installation and inspections, the abandonment of any obsolete micro towers or network nodes, network node poles, and then general provisions, and then does allow for administrative hearing if they can't come to an agreement with these guidelines. I'm more than happy to go in any detail. I know it is lengthy document, very technical, but-
I had one question. Is it, the limitations that are on, in 284, are those that are pre-existing, do we know if we have any in violation, and what happens to those?
We had, that I'm aware of, we don't have any existing. We have an application for two currently. The only inconsistency they would have is they didn't specify any color requirements matching the pole that they're placing. This document does require that the equipment matched the pole, at least in color, so that they're not too much of a contrast in the right-of-way.
So if we pass this, and then the second reading again, are they, will they fall under the guideline requirements, those two?
With the application already in place, they would not fall under the requirements. But again, the Chapter 284 is fairly close anyway, so they're mostly complying, I guess would be the best way to put that.
All right, any questions for Mr. Paxton?
I have pushed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, she go ahead.
Mr. Brady has-
Okay, I just a couple of them, just as a reassurance thing. So staff satisfied the city is sufficiently protected against whatever we want to protect it against on s- unsightliness and whatnot, right?
Yes.
Okay, and is there, I think I asked about this once before, but is there future consideration for expanding the coverage of this design manual, or no?
This design manual is specific to the network nodes. We are working on a right-of-way ordinance that would be more broad regulations.
You mean where it's applicable?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I meant.
The area of town.
Yeah.
This is the entire city limits.
Oh, okay.
So it is citywide.
Oh.
There are specific regulations for the design districts, but there are general regulations for any right-of-way citywide.
Oh, okay, got you.
Yeah, I was confused about that, too. All right, Ms. Summer?
Drew, is this, it's marked draft?
Yes, ma'am.
How close is it to final? I just saw some typos. I'll send them to you if it's not too late.
That's perfect. I knew I had a couple typos and missed commas and periods, but-
You probably put them in there just so we'd be checking.
Just to make sure and be ready.
They're not reading it anyways.
Okay. All right, if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion on ordinance number 2018-11.
Sub move.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Item number 8A is resolution number 07-2018, requesting financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board to finance certain improvements to the city sewer system, authorizing the filing of an application for financial assistance and making certain findings in connection therewith. Mr. Hoppy, we, Mr. McDaniel had said, if you want to, if the discussion for A and B is very, fairly similar, then we'll do separate voting on that presentation, but do we have any speakers? Cheryl, do we have any speakers for 8A or 8B?
No.
Okay, very good.
So he's presenting once, we're going to vote two?
Yes, we're going to vote two separate times. I'll call two separate times, but the discussion will be covered.
Sure.
Just connect the discussion there. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll just briefly run through this. Essentially, this is really talking about the financing mechanisms for this piece of critical infrastructure. So again, Legion Lift Station is mostly in the south and southeastern quadrant of the city limits. It will significantly expand the wastewater capacity within what is one of the largest wastewater basins of the Kerrville community. It is basically at capacity right now. We've got just a little bit of room there, but it is a major piece of infrastructure to be able to, you know, essentially create the vision or be able to achieve the vision that the community is embarking in within the Kerrville 2050 program. Proposed funding right now, we've got two mechanisms. The Water Development Board loan, which is the first item, 8A, that's on your agenda for tonight, and then there's an EIC funding request in addition, which is item 8B, and that is at $2 million. As we've mentioned to you before in the program update from your last meeting, we are at about 60% design and engineering right now, so we're honing in on the estimates. We hope within the next 30 to 45 days that we'll be at the 90% mark. Construction is estimated to begin in January of 2019. Part of that schedule is related to this Texas Water Development Board funding mechanism. Essentially, the Texas Water Development Board loan is a low-cost loan that functions through the state. It is a revolving water supply funding mechanism. It has 30-year terms. Basically, what they do is they buy down the rate, provide it at 1.3 below what we could get at market. So it floats based off of what other bond funding mechanisms are, and then there is an origination fee that is a part of that in applying. There's some other mechanisms in there. We've gone through an analysis with our financial advisor, as well as our project engineer, both are very, and our bond counsel. All of those folks are very well acquainted with this funding mechanism. Essentially, we'll show you a little bit later, but what we've found is that, you know, over the lifespan of that 30-year loan, the city aims to save about $1.4 million in interest. So that's why we felt like that was quite a bit of money and valid taxpayer value, and we wanted to make sure and bring this option to you. There are some additional requirements, there are some environmental pieces related to NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act. There's some wage elements related to Davis Bacon, and then some American iron and steel requirements. We have gone through with our project engineer. We don't think any of these things will be unachievable. They do add a little bit of cost, but obviously they're still, they recognize that there's a significant amount of savings with the difference in the financing. Again, reimbursement of design is also available, and we do intend to go to the Water Development Board to look at potentially seeking the design reimbursement. So just to talk, we did an analysis with our finance department, a very basic analysis on what the difference would be versus just going out to the general market for certificate of obligation versus the Texas Water Development Board loan. You can see that difference of the 1.8 and the 3.1 at current rate structure is that market of 1.3 reduction. You'll see over that 30-year time span, you know, it amounts to quite a bit of savings, actually almost 1.9 million, but you do have some additional costs that could be in there related to Davis Bacon and some other things, other requirements. So that's estimated at about $587,000, so for a total savings over the life of the loan of about 1.4 million.
Can I ask you this right there?
Yes, sir.
That amount, how confident are we that it's in that very vicinity, that 587 I'm talking about?
We're pretty confident. We think it's a conservative estimate, so we think that if anything, it'll be a little bit lower than that. We won't know until the bids come in. That's really where we'll see it, is that, you know, the contractor's having to, you know, do some differences there, but we're really, we're pretty confident that's on the high end.
That includes origination fee?
Yes, that's correct. And you'll see it kind of counters with the issuance cost of the 80,000, so there's a little bit, you kind of either have the origination fee or the issuance cost one way or another. There's a little bit of balance there. As you can see on this debt capacity analysis, this kind of shows the stair step over the next several years, you know, and then essentially, you know, the remaining debt capacity over there on the far right-hand column, you can see this does have some assumptions built into it, and as we've discussed with the council in the last budget season last summer, this does have some rate increase elements that are, you know, baked into these, this Project calendar, as we mentioned before, we're in the design phase. We're hoping to be at 90% in the next 30 days. We've actually gone ahead and done a pre-application meeting with the Texas Water Development Board, just to go ahead and get this on the radar. We've submitted the initial information sheet to them. With your blessing, we will move forward with the loan application in the early April timeframe, and then be requesting the funds from the ESC on April 16th agenda. The application review and approval will happen sometime between April and August. It's kind of fluid, depending on what other items are on Texas Water Development Board, how quick they're able to kind of move through the application review process. They actually go through and do a plan and specification review of the actual engineering and design elements. That will occur in the August and November timeframe. Bidding is anticipated to be in that fall, early winter, and then we hope to be in construction around January of 2019.
Is that, is that project calendar, was that in the packet, or is that something?
This may not have been in your packet.
I would like to be able to get that, that's all.
Sure, sure. If you happen to have any questions, you may have.
Just for those who may have a question, whether on council or in the audience, the wording in the resolution says up to 10 million, so.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. So essentially, what you do with the pre-application piece, because of the estimates where they're at right now with the project, what was recommended to us by bond counsel, as well as our financial advisor, was to go ahead and put the 10 million, make sure, provide lots of cushion. What we'll do is, once we get the 90% estimate from the engineer coming in, we will reduce the application amount for what's actually needed. But you can't, you can't go back and ask for more without going all the way through the application process. So they recommended to go ahead and put the ceiling in there now for a little bit higher than what we were anticipating needing.
Plus, we don't have action by the EIC and the council yet on the 2 million.
Yeah, understand.
And so until we have that, we're at the higher number.
Okay, I just wanted everybody to understand.
Sure, and so EIC will trigger a reduction in what we ask for, is that correct?
That's what we're anticipating.
And whatever comes out of EIC, if it's zero, we'll go with whatever we can get, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We will modify that application at that time, should that be the case.
Okay. Any other questions by council? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 07-2018.
I move approval.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
There you go.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
It's not on my screen. If I hit refresh, will it pop up? There it will, how about that? Did I go ahead?
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Item number 8B is authorization to proceed with a funding application to the Kerrville Economic Improvement Corporation, which we just discussed, for the enhancement of the Legion Lift Station to encourage economic development. Any questions? Is there anything you'd like to add to this particular agenda item?
I'll just add that, you know, this is a significant expansion of that piece of infrastructure. It's not a replacement of the existing piece. It is not a maintenance of the existing piece. It is a 50% enhancement for capacity for the future development within that corridor that will not occur without this piece of infrastructure being put in. So it absolutely is applicable for economic development purposes.
Any questions by council?
I just got one, just thought of. Was this going to be on the west side of 534 or on the east side? The future location for the new installation is on the east side of 534. Yes, sir. It's on a piece of property that's been acquired by the city for some time.
All right, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to authorize staff to submit the funding application to EIC for the Legion Lift Station.
I made a motion.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 8C is to authorize city manager to finalize the scope of work for professional services and proceed with developing a long-range water supply plan for the city. Mr. Hoppy, what's this about?
Okay, this is kind of an early action item from the comprehensive plan, looking at a whole host of potential water supply avenues for the city of Kerrville for long into the future. And so we have engaged with Lloyd Goslink, Towns, Rochelle, and Townsend on the legal aspects of-
We're in the wrong frame. Okay.
Good to go?
You are.
Uh-oh.
We just knew the right picture.
You're good.
Okay.
It's good.
On the long-range water supply plan, essentially, I'd like to ask Ms. Sarah Thornton to come up to the podium to explain how that relationship works, but the contract with HDR, we've been, staff's been working with HDR on the scope of services that will kind of filter under the Lloyd Goslink contract for some proprietary reasons.
Good evening. As EA indicated, my name is Sarah Thornton, and I'm an attorney with the law firm Lloyd Goslink in Austin. I've been working with the city of Kerrville for about eight years now on water supply issues and water rights matters. And y'all reached out, I guess it was the end of last year, about pursuing a long-range water supply plan to best position the city in the future, to be able to address your growing demands. And after reaching out, I worked with the city to help identify some consultants that we use on a regular basis, and this consultant in particular that y'all selected is HDR. And subsequent to selecting that consultant, I've worked with HDR and with city staff to prepare a scope of work with HDR really doing the heavy lifting on the preparation of that scope of work, to identify not only what the water supply needs are for the city, but also identify alternatives to address those needs in the future. And Corey Shockley with HDR is here as well, and he's going to go into the details of the scope itself. Now, the reason why I'm in the mix here is because there are legal issues at play when you're dealing with water supply planning. You want to make sure that you're careful and, you know, because there is- You want to make sure that you're careful and, you know, because there is potential in a permitting process for there to be litigation. And so that's why I'm involved in the process. It is primarily an engineering exercise, but because of what we've seen in developing other water supplies and the potential for litigation, we wanted to make sure, to the extent we can protect information, we want to do that during this process. So if y'all have any questions for me, I can turn it over to Corey to talk about his scope.
Any questions by council? Not, but like to hear from consultant?
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Corey Shockley, and I'm a professional engineer with HDR Engineering. I'm located in Austin, Texas. I do water supply planning all across the state for several small entities up to large entities. We've done four of the regional plans for the state water plan for the Water Development Board over the years, and I can walk you through kind of the highlights of our scope of work tonight. The first step in any good planning exercise is to figure out how much water you've used historically and what you plan to use in the future. Obviously, population growth plays into that, per capita use as well. The supply from your existing supplies are always a big consideration, especially with droughts being seemingly more prevalent. Everyone remembers the drought from 2011, 2012. The resiliency of those supplies always come into question. How much water do we really have is the question that we're trying to answer with that piece. We take the demands, the supplies, we come up with a need picture, considering future growth and what the needs are out into the future. And we will identify water management strategies to meet those needs. We've looked and scoped a host of different options, from surface water, groundwater, reuse, ASR expansion, even up to some regional cooperation ideas, to really put everything out there and make sure that no stone is left unturned in looking at the future water supply options for the city. We take this information, we, working with city staff, we come up with an implementation plan. Kind of our recommendation, using your goals of what you want to get out of this plan, to come back to you with a report and presentations to staff and council to say, this is our recommendation for moving forward and how to best proceed in those areas.
Okay, and the scope of work's in there, and Mr. McDaniel sent me and probably everyone there your reputation online, and it looks like it's very good. And so, any other questions for him specifically on what we have in our packet, Ms. Summerlin?
Which regional water plan did you work on?
We've done, I've personally worked on Region G, which is the central Brazos downstream of Lubbock, through about College Station, a little bit below there. I've worked on Region L, the San Antonio region. I continue to work on the Region N, Corpus Christi, and then also Region O for the city of Lubbock.
Oh, it's which one?
Lubbock.
Lubbock. Thank you.
Corey, you might comment on how, how is this different from the regional plan, and why would Kerrville want to do this?
Yes, sir. So the regional plans are a very good, high-level approach for the state to get a feel for what's going on out there. In our experience across the state, what we find is that the regional plans are a really good first step, but a lot of times, the planning assumptions that the state uses don't match your reality. So the first step is to look at your assumptions, your planning assumptions, what's most important to you, because they don't always match up with the state. So what we found is, regional plans are a good first step, but your individual specific plan tailored to your community incorporates your assumptions. You're able to go into a much more greater level of detail. For a city Kerrville size, your water supply system is quite diverse, and a lot of cities don't have that. This type of effort allows us to dig into that, modeling it, evaluating resiliency to a much greater level than you would find in a regional plan.
Maybe a legal question, I don't know, but I know we talked to Sarah about it, not for this in particular, but if you represent all these other regions, and our regions are competitive at some level, is that a conflict? Could that be a problem?
We don't see this conflict. Currently, we no longer do the Region L plan. We do do the Corpus Christi region and the Brazos region. I don't foresee any strategies that involve going that far for water, so I wouldn't see any conflicts out there.
I had a couple of questions. One's somewhat specific, but looking through it, the scope, the direct reuse study part says it will use available treated F1 discharges developed in the 2014 master plan. Why are we going back to 2014 instead of more recent?
So it's, it's a lot like the history being a good representation of what to expect in the future. So what we'll do with that is, we will go back and see what your discharges have been historically, based off your consumption, and we'll try to project what future discharges are going to be. So what we're really trying to get to is the amount of effluent that you're going to create in the future to be able to use for a reuse system.
But, yeah, well, I mean, I understand the history and projecting forward, but why are we going back to what was presented in the 2014 plan, which I'm guessing is numbers from 2013 or 2012?
It's a starting place. What we've actually have in our scope of work is a big data collection effort with the city. That'll be one of the first things we do, and we'll ask EA and Stuart and those guys for everything up through the end of 2017 and even date into 2018, so that we can see what that trend looks like.
Okay. And then the other is, just, you're going to create the study, or you're going to go through the study. How much of it is going to be determined by what we, staff, whatever, provide to you versus, I mean, me personally, I prefer to have you come give your expert opinion on what you see without us priming the pump, so to speak. How much of that is going to be part of this?
What we look for is, as we kick off initially with the study, we want to know what your goals and initiatives are, and we want to get your data, and then we want to come back and present you our recommendation. And we have scoped in the document several places throughout that process to see if we're on the right track with each other. So I guess to answer your question, councilman, I'm going to provide you my best engineering judgment of what the long-range water supply plan should be with input from the city, not just saying, this is what you guys want. Okay, we'll write a report around that. That's not what we're sculpting.
So the data will lead us more?
The data will lead, yes, sir.
All right.
And I see a representative from UGRA board here with us this evening, and so we talked about this yesterday. There may be some times where, you know, we'll have legal representation. There'll be stakeholder meetings, I'm sure.
Yes, ma'am.
The information that'll cross over. There'll be some things that probably will not. And so they'll be meeting Wednesday to talk about their strategy going forward, and I appreciate you coming tonight, Diane, to see what we're doing here. Any other questions? All right. I would entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to proceed with this arrangement as presented.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion in two seconds. Cast your vote, please. Motion carries five to zero, and thank you both of you for coming this evening. Item 8D is Resolution Number 05-2018, adopting the Water Conservation Initiative. Stuart?
Mayor and council, I just want to briefly introduce Stuart Barron as he comes up. We've got a whole host of water conservation pieces we wanted to brief you on tonight, and then a resolution specific to some low-flow rebate programs.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to talk about the Water Conservation Initiative for low-flow toilets. And it's going to be Resolution Number 50-2018. And we are trying to eliminate some more of the older-type toilets that we have here in the city. As you can see on the heads-up display there, before 1980, toilets flushed anywhere from five to seven gallons. After, after the 80s, they went to 3.5, and in 2000, excuse me, 1994, that's when our ordinance is, or that's what we're asking now, is to update all of those toilets from pre-1994 up to current 1.6-gallon flush toilets. So the water conservation is our primary goal in doing this. Early model toilets waste millions of gallons of water, not only in our city, but across the state and the country, so we're trying to eliminate a little bit of that. Quality of the water customers are eligible to assist, or qualified, excuse me. Water customers are eligible for assistance to replace the old low-flow, or high-flow toilets. There'll be a $75 rebate for eligible people. And it's a pilot program. We want to run it for about 12 months, see how much interest we have in it. We estimate somewhere around 200 toilets. We're going to replace 220 toilets, and that's a cost of about $16,785. So some of the other water conservation activities that we've been working on, or handouts that we have available here at City Hall, you can come in and pick up different handouts, find out what kind of plants grow good in the area, or how to estimate how much water is leaking in a pipe. We have a little scale in the office up there that tells you how much water's, how much water's leaking. What's drought conservation state the city is in. We've seen the, I don't know if you've seen the magnets or not. We have all this in the water records office. It's a multicolored magnet that tells you what stage you're in and when you can water and how much water you're using. Some of the other things that we've have are the free soil moisture. Irrigation is a big piece of water demand in the summertime. Our demand almost doubles in the summer. And so we felt that if people know how moist their soil is, maybe it will help them limit how much irrigation they're doing. And so we actually give away the little meters as well in the water office. Toilet leak tablets, blue dye, so you can tell if your toilet's leaking. Website handouts and links to the Water Development Board and also Texas A&amp;M. So if you go on our website, you can find different methods of finding leak information. Leak letters that we mail out of our office. For, all of our meters indicate if it's affluing 24 hours a day, that it flags it for us, and we send them to the residents to tell them, hey, you have a potential leak, and you need to look for it. And the last one is the potential sponsor of a rainwater harvesting system at Louise Hayes Park. Talk a little bit more about that. We're, I think we're exploring the option of the rainwater harvest catchment system. We're developing the concept for the budget of about a 30,000-gallon tank. It would go down at the, at the pavilion in Louise Hayes Park and capture all of the water that's flowing on those, those big roofs that are up there. Estimated cost for this is between $35,000 and $40,000. This would include the tank and the installation. It does not include the irrigation. The irrigation system would be possibly another $30,000, depending on what we want to irrigate, if we're just irrigating the trees, or if we want to irrigate the grass, what all that includes. So this would also give opportunity for an educational feature within the community for people to see that somewhere and ask questions about it. What is this? How does it work? How do I get one? And so on. So what that might look like is, this is a picture of Louise Hayes Park. The big blue tank there is, or this, the big blue dot is where the tank would be. And that would be sitting behind the pavilion, kind of left behind it, I guess. And some of the different options for irrigation there, as you see in the, in the yellow arrows, what the tank may look like. There's one that's partially submerged. The one's at the top left is actually at the crock center. And then there's a bottom right one. It's kind of, kind of aesthetically pleasing tank that you would see, not just a big black cylinder out there. So that would be, that's something else that we're, our conservation effort. And with that, I'll take questions.
So we're not actually voting on the rainwater harvesting system this evening, but I know that in the conversation, there will probably be conversation with UGRA, because I think they have a program to participate, do they not, with rainwater harvesting?
We're certainly very interested in partnering.
Right.
Get from the conservation.
Okay. Mr. Ferguson, you had?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the toilets. I've recently encountered...
Do I need to take a break?
Recently encountered some new toilets, bought some, and the little flush handle on it, okay? It comes in two pieces. You can flush it for minimal flush, or you can flush the whole thing. And I think that applies, you can even reduce to 1.6.
Yes, sir. They have a kind of an ultra-low feature on a toilet now that has, someone have the push button or a handle that kind of is a halfway position, and you can flush a portion of the volume of the water.
Yeah, that's right. Now, are these that you're encouraging people to get, have that feature?
Those would be eligible. The replacement one is what we're focusing on. It's the bigger, the pre-1994.
Well, I would just encourage you to look for those that are most effective, most efficient.
Yes, sir.
I understand people may decide what they wish to do, but just let it be known that these extra-efficient ones are available. That's all I'm asking, or suggesting.
Have we had much participation? I know we've advertised online these giveaways, these contributions.
Yes, for an example, the moisture, soil moisture thing, we've given away about half of them, and I don't remember, how many is that, Scott? Do you remember?
About 75.
About 75 so far, so. We anticipate a big run on them tomorrow after this presentation.
See, Stuart, you've done well with your efforts.
And after a little bit of rain doesn't hurt either.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions for Mr. Barron?
I have a question. Stuart, back on the toilet, are the schools and hotels going to be participating in this? I imagine those are the big users of water. Are we going to encourage them to do things?
Most of the hotels and schools that you'll see have the saloon valve on them. They're not a tank-type toilet. And those saloon valves are past, are more recent than 1994. So they would not be eligible if they, that valve has that capability within the valve itself. So they don't need a, they don't need to, I guess they would be eligible for it if they had the tank-type toilets, but the saloon valves are adjustable on their own.
But to his point, you're basically saying the schools and hotels, those valves are likely being low-flow already, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good question. Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 05-2018.
Move approval?
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
There you go.
Motion in a second. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Stuart. Item number 8E is a waiver of perimeter sidewalk construction. Per city code section 26-36F for a property located at 410 Junction Highway adjacent to the north frontage of State Highway 27, located between Florence Street and Center Avenue. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you. Mr. Ferris and Mr. Avery, property owner and tenant, are both present tonight. If you have any questions for them, this is a request to waive the sidewalk requirement for this property at 410 Junction Highway. The sidewalk waiver is actually for kind of the north portion along, maybe along Florence and Center Avenue. There is an existing sidewalk along Junction Highway. The city council, or, excuse me, the city engineer has the option to allow a waiver based solely on the right-of-way width. This property does have adequate right-of-way width, and the city engineer could not approve that waiver. So brought it to council to review whether it has topographic restrictions such as slope or drainage structures, whether all the properties adjacent to it were exempted from the sidewalk ordinance, whether the properties adjacent to it were developed prior to the effective ordinance, or whether this would create any undue hardship, would not be in the best interest for the public, or does not meet the intent of the sidewalk code. The property does front Junction Highway, and is surrounded by several commercial and residential properties. It does have the adequate right-of-way width. Subject property is relatively flat and has no topographic restrictions. The other properties have not been exempted, however, they were developed prior to the current sidewalk ordinance. The property consists a large section of concrete with just a small portion of grass in that northern corner along Florence and Center, which is where they're requesting the waiver to install that new sidewalk. This is looking west along Junction Highway. This is from the corner of Florence and Center. This is the area they're requesting the waiver for the sidewalk. And that's looking again east on Junction Highway. Based on the lack of topographic restrictions and the adjacent sidewalks in the area, staff has recommended denial of the waiver. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Ms. Brady?
I have discussion, but not necessarily questions. I guess one of the things you said, though, the, the properties being in... Okay. I guess this doesn't matter, right? The properties in the area are, are all built before the cutoff date, right?
That's correct.
Okay, but the hitch to it is, one of them has a sidewalk. Is that the problem?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I don't know if you have a slide for it, but the, in our packet, Exhibit 3 was the master plan of this section.
So you can see at the very top of your screen-
Yeah, do you have the one that's blown up into the actual? Yeah, so that one right there. So the point that I just wanted to address is that, looking at that, the sidewalk master plan as it was written, these two sections were not proposed as sidewalks, correct? I mean, the, see the blue arrow goes into that triangle and the two white, not the hypotenuse, the other sides of the triangle are not part of a proposed sidewalk, correct? Am I reading that right?
Yes, sidewalk master plan is strictly for collectors, arterials, your major thoroughfare areas. If you look at this, you'll see Junction Highway, Woodlawn, anything connecting major roads to landmarks. These two were considered residential and so that's where just our sidewalk code prohibits, the waiver or anything like that, allows the waiver. As of right now, because it's a development, it's required sidewalk and that's why we're here tonight.
Right, so I-
But yeah, it's not, we're just showing you this.
Right.
So on this one, you'll see we've got the shopping center just down Junction Highway as a landmark. There's not one immediately adjacent. And so that's where none of the residential streets, you know, strictly have a required sidewalk because it's not going to the Deeter Center as Woodlawn and some of these others do.
Right, so basically, just to encapsulate the purpose of the sidewalk plan, ordinance aside, the, you know, the purpose of the sidewalk plan, where the sidewalks would take us to destination points and allow people to maneuver through some connected way, right? So that little triangle was deemed not necessary to get people to a walkable connection point.
And that's more because it's a residential.
Right, but that's all, okay. So.
I don't see any buttons pushed. Anybody have, did you have some?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Ferris, if you'd step to the podium please.
Again, Richard Ferris, excuse me. If you will look on your map there or on any of your other items that you have, you will find that there is no sidewalk aside from the brand-new one in front of Wells Fargo, all the way to that shopping center that they're in reference to. There's no sidewalk anyplace. This property has a full concrete apron, the whole length of it on Junction Highway. It also has a bunch of, probably about 50 feet of it roughly, I don't measure it, going up Florence Street. So the only question would be the one grass corner. Biggest thing there is going to happen is my, the doctor across the street is going to lose his free parking. But this Jason over here wants to lease the property from me. He's been working on it for over six months. He's got about $6,000 invested in it so far. And now we've come up with this latest obstacle. And I just really don't think it's a necessary thing. So I would ask you to give really due consideration to that fact. He's trying to start a business.
Okay, any questions for, oh, I'm sorry. Rudy?
Oh, I thought you were gonna, I thought you had actually-
I had both of you lined up here. Vocal?
Okay, well, I was just gonna say, kind of along the lines, it's not questions for you, you can actually, you can sit down if you like. It's more statements.
I can hear you better up here.
Oh, okay, well then stay right there. You're good. I'll do my best here. So basically, my take on it is, as I pointed out, the master sidewalk plan wasn't really contemplating this. This is actually sort of a special case property because most of them would be doing a sidewalk on one frontage. This happens to front a street on three sides, which in my view, kind of gets you to the undue hardship aspect of it, necessary for the waiver. And then, the other is somewhat minor, but balancing the need for sidewalks in somewhat of an unnecessary corner versus, we don't have very, I mean, there's a grass patch there that we're about to pave over. And however small it is, it seems like a unnecessary trade-off to me. And then the other is the, what was I gonna say? Forgot already, sorry. So, oh, yeah, so if you go down Center Street, I'm not sure how it got there, but basically each corner house, as you drive, I guess, away from Junction Highway, each corner house has a sidewalk in front of it, but just the corner house. So the sidewalks don't go anywhere and because those are older developments, they're not likely to get a sidewalk built in there. So I don't see the necessity of creating this sidewalk to nowhere except around his own property. So I would be ended up, well, I guess you can, I was gonna make them.
Yes, you have a statement, Stuart?
I just had a question for the city engineer or Drew. In those pictures, y'all had improvements around, are we doing, are we requiring them to do back a curb in a certain distance?
For commercial property, yes, this would be back a curb by-
Is that going to affect any existing improvements or infrastructure?
Like the fire hydrant?
Yeah, the fire hydrant, probably a water valve. And who would that cost?
See if we can get the-
I guess is Cape Hube okay with putting concrete around their telephone poles?
So essentially, we've got stop sign, fire hydrant, and powerful all within that proximity that you're referring to. And so yes, that would be something that we would have to relocate. Or the property owner would have to put the sidewalk around it as long as there's adequate right-of-way width. As Drew mentioned earlier, all I have is the jurisdiction for the full right-of-way width and that's why we're coming to you tonight for, to look at all this.
So explain those two options you just said. One is to relocate those three items.
Right.
Which would be a cost to the city, I assume.
Probably the city and then Cape Hube. I'm assuming that's Cape Hube hole or West Street.
Or, or to have them take the sidewalk sort of in further?
As long as-
So there'd be a grass patch around the, okay. All right, good question.
As long as there's right-of-way width to do that.
Okay. All right.
Ms. Summerlin, you have to speak?
I do. I'd like to know some more details of the hardship this would work. What is the total expected investment on the property and what proportion of that would the sidewalk be?
How many feet, in other words, is that?
Well, I'm looking more for cost.
Right, well, you associate with that how many feet, how many four?
I can't answer the cost of the sidewalk at this point because it hadn't been brought up. So I really don't know. He has his investments. We've got six months and more in time that's sitting there. I'm not guaranteeing any income from the property. So I guess you could cule, as you say, it's pretty good hardship. Plus, he has to put up, he's gonna put up two buildings.
And what scale of investment are those buildings gonna be?
Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Jason Avery. I'm from Rockport. Actually, we're new to Kerrville, my wife and I, and my two daughters. I had my business in Rockport. We lost our home and our business due to the hurricane. Alls I'm wanting to put up is a 22 foot, 22 and feet, 22, 26 feet in depth, 14 feet in height. That's it. That's the only building we're putting on. It's going on the left side of the structure that is already there, what you see right there where the cones are at. It's actually gonna come in some a little bit more and go up five feet, which stays with inside the easements. The cost, the project cost of the structure itself is 5,000.
Any other questions by council? I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we grant the waiver based on not just hardship, but the undue hardship and the lack of sort of necessity of a sidewalk surrounding that property.
All right. Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Please cast your vote. Motion carries four to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight F, waiver of perimeter sidewalk construction per city code section 26-36F for property located at 3410 Memorial adjacent to the north frontage of State Highway 27 located at south of State Loop 534 in front of the VA Hospital. Mr. Paxton?
This is the property we discussed at 3410 Memorial for the conditional use part that earlier, as we mentioned, I think this picture shows it fairly well. The limited frontage on that lot is less than half the width of the total width of the property. The adjacent property actually has a small sliver of frontage in front of the property here at 3410. The width of the adequate, or excuse me, the width of the right-of-way is adequate. There is some topographical restrictions. There's some slope running into the property down to a drainage, drainage feature. Property adjacent have not been exempted. Some of those, as you can see, are undeveloped. Some have been developed prior to the sidewalk ordinance. And there were some recent developments nearby that have put in their sidewalks since then. Based on those criteria, staff recommends denial of the waiver. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
What's the speed on there, do you know, Drew?
Forty-five.
It's forty-five.
The whole way?
I gotta request him to speak.
I'm sorry?
So the slither that's not their property, if we go back to that one slide. So the slither that's not their property, which property actually owns that?
I believe it's the car wash, if I'm not mistaken.
So the point is that it's the existing development there and unless they, I assume then they own this, that whole stretch of land that's in there? I mean, also going back behind the car wash, you know what I'm saying? So there's that. And then the other side of the property, that's, is that all VA?
I believe that's correct.
Yes.
It is. And there's not sidewalk there or is there?
And that's why, one of the items I included in your packet is the master plan. And this is what Drew had alluded to.
Yeah.
Mini mark has the sidewalks along 27 and 534. And then here's the master plan. As you'll see, the VA is considered a landmark. And this is the roads that the master plan was looking at, the major thoroughfare areas throughout the city, to, you're linking to the landmarks.
But to that point, it is a landmark and we've got proposed sidewalks running down there, but the sidewalk ordinance is, if that's a commercial business, is exempted, correct?
From what we've seen, I looked at that, trying to use that as one of your criteria and nothing on the current ordinance.
No, no, I'm not saying that we, I'm just saying though, if it was, if that's commercial property, I'm not suggesting theirs is, I'm just saying, VA is a destination, but commercial property east of 534 on Junction Highway is exempted from the sidewalk ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the idea is actually, this last property is, we're talking about, there's gonna be a gap already from the car wash, that slither. These guys will put in their sidewalk and it'll never connect on either side because VA's not gonna put one in, right?
Right.
And then-
They're not gonna have any-
Right. And then even going further down, just as a, the sidewalk that does go down further as you work your way east, it's actually, as a bike rider, it's unrideable, right? Aren't there the little cuts that are all for drainage or something in the sidewalk there?
Yeah, you had a picture of one earlier.
Not, yeah, going-
Yeah, you're going more towards the-
The ball fields.
County Road and Bridge.
Yeah, yeah. I think the sidewalk starts to get, I mean, there is some, but it's like, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just, it seems like a sidewalk to nowhere, but-
So if it was, if they did do another curb cut, would that, that would go in that area?
Yeah, that would.
Also?
For which property?
This property, if they platted and divided.
As long as Tax Department would allow them, yes. But what we've seen with Tax Department is-
So they might, if they requested that and they sold it and they needed another separate, they'd have to tear that up and do a driveway.
And to mention your point about the ordinance, the ordinance was done in '06, master plan was done as a resolution in '08. So I know we've had some mentioning with that in the comp plan that we do have those issues. This is one of the prime issues that we have. The '06 has the ordinance rules, but the '08 master plan has a resolution is the destination landmarks in the whole town.
Mr. Vocal?
Yes. What would this, I guess, would this be back a curb again?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was your?
Would this sidewalk be placed on the back of the curb opposite the right-of-way? Would this affect any of those trees on that right-of-way?
If you look, yes, it will. There's some small, I believe I've got a picture. That's actually where this picture, it kind of tails off to the bottom left. It's small shrubbery trees. It's not any of the, like the large tree that you're seeing there, the five feet back of curb is in front of that.
It's still a buffer to that property though.
Right.
Any other utility?
No, ma'am. They're all throughout the property.
In this picture, that mailbox is the driveway to the house that's already on that property? Is that what we're looking at here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah, that's what I'm asking, okay.
Are any other questions by council to staff? If not, I would entertain a motion on item eight F.
Mayor, I'll move that we deny the request for a waiver. I think, you know, we can argue about sidewalks to nowhere, but if we're ever gonna have sidewalks, we have to be strict about our plan and our rules. And I don't know how we justify ourselves in enforcing it on the mini mark and then the next property over, we let them go. I just think we have to be consistent and we can't, we need to deny the request for a waiver.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Motion fails, three to two. Item number eight G.
Hold on.
Wait a minute, now you, don't you have to have a motion?
No, we actually, yeah, nothing's happened at this point.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to grant the waiver.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second to grant the waiver. Motion carries three to two. Okay, item number eight G is to authorize the city manager to initiate a process to develop a public-private partnership for the development of approximately 34 acres of city-owned property on Loop 534 for the primary purpose of providing new housing options.
Mayor, I move that we take this in the executive session under 551-087 and 551-072 with the city manager.
All right, under economic development and deliberation with attorney, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Property. Real property.
I'm sorry, real property. Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor or just cast your vote. Motion carries five to zero and if we could postpone the executive session, if that's all right, so we could move ahead to item, we'll do that after we cover item number nine A, is that all right with council?
Sure.
Budget and economic update for the month ending February the 28th. Where is Sandra?
That is weird.
Good evening, mayor and council. We'll make this brief so y'all can get to your executive session. I'd like to go over the budget and economic update for the month ended February 28th. In the general fund, we received revenues of 3.7 million compared to expenditures of 1.9. On a year-to-date basis, we have revenues of 16 million compared to expenditures of 10.9. You can see some information there broken out on your handout about property tax and sales tax. Property tax- Property tax seems to be on track to meet our budget for the year. Sales tax, we are falling a little bit behind on. We had budgeted sales tax to be three-point-six percent higher than the previous year, and we're actually about flat. We've done some extensive research into what could be driving it, and some of the things that we are finding out are really that we had a bump last year related to the hailstorm, and all of the roofs that were repaired, all of the cars that were repaired, all of the shingles that were taken to the dump, and we don't have that same occurrence in 2018. So that's what we're seeing there. So we are continuing to watch sales tax very closely and monitoring that for where we may end up the year. But as of now, we're about flat with the current year rather, or the prior year rather than three-point-six percent up. On the water and sewer fund, you'll see revenues of eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand compared to expenditures of nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand. We also, on a year-to-date basis, have revenues of five-point-one-million compared to expenditures of five-point-three-million. When we're looking at a comparison to prior year there, you'll see some expenses, or revenues that have increased specifically related to the debt refinancing and some transfers that occurred between the debt service fund and the water and sewer fund when we did that debt refinancing. And then also, on the expense side, this year we budgeted for more transfers out of the water and sewer fund for capital projects, both the comprehensive plan and water and sewer capital projects. And obviously, this, this fund is very seasonal in nature, so once we get to the summer months, depending on how much watering is being done, we'll see, you know, significant changes then. On the hotel-motel fund, we have seventy-six-thousand in revenue compared to two-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand in expense in February on a year-to-date basis, revenues of four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand compared to expenses of five-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. February did include a quarterly payment, so that made those expenses high. As far as, um, projects, I have just a brief snapshot here of a few projects. I know that y'all have been getting, um, project updates from engineering, but these are some projects that had activity in the month of February. By far, the largest activity is happening with the reuse system, where we had, you know, one-point-three-million dollars spent there, and then some, um, design costs for Legion Lift, which we've discussed earlier, and then a few, kind of finish-up costs related to the sports complex and the indoor athletic facility there. Moving down the page to the economic indicator kind of information at the bottom, on development activities, you'll see that we're continuing with issuing residential permits and commercial activity as well. Almost eighteen million in commercial development activities so far this year. On the housing side, we continue to have, um, strong residential listings that are active and residential sales, and a total of twenty-three-million dollars in residential sales year-to-date in the calendar year 2018. Unemployment continues extremely low, and low compared even to the state of Texas and then to the nation. And our utility accounts build, continue just a very slow growth pattern that they've had for some time now. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Have we ever done comparisons on the development activities to, from prior year?
We have, we have. One of the things that I've discussed with Amy is reworking this whole, the format of this, so you get more comparative data, and she also, I've also asked her to include all projects, not just the ones that we typically track, so that y'all can kind of see the whole picture.
Sure.
And I can tell you that on a, on the development activities for the commercial permits, year-to-date through February of 2017, we were at seven-point-two-million compared to seventeen-point-nine. So that's a significant increase.
Yeah, see, that's interesting.
And on the residential permits, we were at twenty-one last year compared to thirty-one this year. And, um, yes, it is, it is. Yeah, so there's a lot of strong economic indicators for sure in the economy.
I just got one question. Help me to understand the, in hotel-motel fund, the revenue's growing at a slower pace than the expenditures?
There are, there is some seasonality with that fund, so we're expecting that, you know, by the time we get to the end of the year, the revenues for the year are going to cover the expenses for the year, but we have much, we have larger revenue for that fund in the summer months.
So there's cycling of when the expenses go out?
And the, the expenses, so our main expense from that fund is the payment to the CBB, which is on a quarterly basis. And so we just do that, you know, one-fourth each quarter, but then we do get more revenues in during the summer months.
Ms. Summerlin?
I'm just remembering that symbolic tax cut we did to the property tax rate at budget time. I want to encourage all the citizens to take their great, big savings and go spend it, so we get it back in sales tax.
And it does say that the largest category is retail, up one-point-nine percent, which is interesting factor two.
Yes, yes.
Okay?
All right, thank you very much.
Uh, one, just one last thing, on the sports complex.
Yes.
Facility, I guess the numbers that we were emailed were more recurrent than this report.
Yes, that's correct, yeah, those were through.
I'm sorry, did you say that?
No, I didn't, but you are right about that. There were expenditures in March, and the most recent report you have shows those March expenditures, but this is just through February twenty.
Just wanna make sure I read it right. Okay, thank you very much, Jamie. All right, we'll move quickly to item number ten A, which is appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Ms. Craig?
We have three terms that are due to expire March thirty-first, and we have nine applications from persons who meet the minimum qualifications for this board. The interview team were council members for Rudy and Mrs. Summerlin, and they requested that it be on this agenda.
All right, I trust each of them spoke with them, I spoke with all of them, but I did not know, and I'm so pleased that we had nine, that's just as encouraging as all the applicants, we had three IC, that's great, people want to participate. Which of you would like to speak?
Go ahead, okay. So basically, as she said, I mean, we were really encouraged by not just the number of applicants, but also the talent of each and every applicant. We had nine applicants for the three openings, all willing to serve enthusiastically, actually, and they all had good thoughts and ideas about it. With so many qualified applicants, it presented us with a difficult choice, actually a good problem to have, I suppose. So I hope that, I mean, I would encourage all the applicants that are not ended up being selected to, you know, continue to stay interested and serve in the community on many of the other boards that are out there. But we ended up coming to a recommendation of, I guess I make this as a motion then.
Okay.
I'll just make the motion. To appoint Celeste Hammond, I forget how to say her last name, Hammond. Linda Abels and Matthew Thurlo to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
And I'll second that motion. Y'all? No, it's a minor miracle that George and I came to a reasonable, you know, a joint recommendation, and that's just a tribute to those nine excellent candidates that we
Who was the third one?
have. We thank you all.
Matthew Thurlo. He worked in parks and maintenance for about thirty years. And landscaping, architecture. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Motion carries five to zero, and thank both of you for your diligence, and thanks again to everyone, I had notes on, on every applicant here. So, at this point, number eleven is items for future agendas, council. Anybody?
Mayor, I do have one item that I want to bring to your attention, actually one person. Because I didn't have the report on this agenda, I want to introduce Brian Hunt.
Yeah.
Brian Hunt, go ahead and stand, Brian, is our new building official, and we're very pleased to have him on board. He started with us on Monday, and he brings a lot of experience, not just in the private sector, in the construction industry, but also in county government and in city government with code enforcement and, and a lot of other things besides the, the building trade. So we're very, very pleased to have him on board, and look forward to his contributions. Thank you, Brian.
And his title again is?
Building official.
Building official. Thank you very much, good to have you, welcome to Kerrville. All right, then item.
I have one, mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Drew, where are we at on the food trucks? All right.
All right, we'll take a poll on that. Then, at this point, we will, at eight o'clock, we will adjourn into executive session to discuss the motion that was earlier made. Thank you all, you're welcome to stay. Okay, let the record show, we are back in regular session at eight-thirty-one PM. There was no action taken in executive session. Item number thirteen is action on items discussed in executive session, and if we have a motion, it would be in regards to item eight G.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
And so I move that we authorize the city manager to initiate a process to develop a public-private partnership for the development of approximately thirty-four acres of city-owned property on Loop five-thirty-four for the primary purpose of providing new housing options.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. You can raise, you can, are you?
Punch your vote.
Okay, motion carries five to zero. Seeing no more agendas, items on here, we will dismiss at eight-thirty-two PM.